Three, and I'd like to start. The Atherton Council. June or January eleventh closed session. Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Holland. Councilmember DeGolia. Councilmember Lewis. Vice Mayor Hawkins-Manwellian. And Mayor DeGolia.
Here. Just a reminder, with these mics, you have to turn them on, and anybody online can't hear you unless you're speaking into them with them on.
Yeah. All right, we did have a closed session at three o'clock. City Attorney. Do we have any report out of the closed session?
We did not have any public comment in advance to closed session, and there is no reportable action.
Okay. Does anybody have any public comments? You see any online?
Yes.
Okay. Excuse me?
Mr. Palito has his hand raised.
Okay, Bob?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, welcome back.
Hi, hi, everyone. I've got, I've got a comment relative to the housing element. I'm gonna read it. I don't normally read things, but I'm aware of the three-minute time limit. I'll try not to read as fast as George, so people can understand what I say. While I have never been a believer in the all ADU strategy. I grudgingly went along with my colleagues in that strategy as a starting point while I was on the council. We've all learned a lot in the past six months. And I've become even less enamored with the all ADU strategy. The world of twenty-five-foot building heights, four-foot setbacks, and multiple ADUs per parcel is not something that belongs in Atherton. And the unintended consequences will be felt throughout the town for a long time to come. As I've stated in these meetings before. A handful of well-planned, well-located, and carefully-controlled projects allowing multifamily construction will be much less impactful on Atherton. And can, and can lead us to an approved housing element from HCD, which is essential for the town to avoid costly litigation and the catastrophic possibilities presented by the builder's remedy scenarios. There are a number of possible locations the council has looked at for possible family, multifamily projects. But I want to propose a location I believe is much preferable to dropping such a project into a residential area like on Oakwood or on Bay Road. I also want to propose a rudimentary path forward to bring some low-income housing to fruition in Atherton and get our housing element approved with minimal negative impact to our residents while maintaining maximum possible control over the project. The ECR corridor at the north end of town is a bit out of character with the rest of the town. The east side is covered with a variety of commercial buildings running south well past Fifth Avenue. On the west side, there are a number of smaller assets and properties that either back up to or enter onto the El Camino Real. Specifically, five on Saballo, nine on Gresham, two on the El Camino, and a last one at the corner of the El Camino and Stockbridge. These properties, based on twenty-one, twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two sales data, will range in price from three million to four and a half million dollars, well below property values in most of the town. I believe these properties offer the best opportunity for the town to develop some lower-income housing suitable for city workers, teachers, and the like. And hopefully, in the least invasive way possible, with significant mitigation potential for the neighbors. In other words, walls, trees, vegetation, and setbacks along both Saballo and Gresham. No solution is perfect, but I think this is the one that is, is the best I, I've come across. I would further propose, and this is crucial, that the town develop a plan to actively pursue the purchase of these properties, either directly with a combination of general fund money and low-interest debt, or indirectly working with a suitable developer of lower-income housing. Even two of the parcels I've, I've mentioned provide a significant number of, of possible high-density worker-affordable units that can be accomplished in this housing cycle. Furthermore, a legitimate commitment by the town to identify, zone, fund, and develop a significant number of lower-income units should put us over the hump with HCD, which is where we need to be. Finally, I believe time is of the essence. Your submission on the thirty-first. It, it's out of the, it's out of the barn. It, it's gonna be what it is, and it's gonna at best get a D as a grade from HCD. We need to be ready with a well-vetted, acceptable plan to submit for multifamily before our housing element is denied and before litigation and builder's remedy scenarios have a chance to blossom in the town of Atherton. I urge you to give this proposal some serious and immediate consideration. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Bob. Enjoy Hawaii.
I will.
Okay, that's good. Wish you were there. We wish we were there. All right, any other public comments?
I see none online.
Okay, yes.
We have the hand raised. No, nobody will hear you unless-
Yeah, we're on public comments right now. No, we haven't gotten onto that, that item. But we have just general public comments at this point in time. You're welcome to do it now.
We do have one member of the public on Zoom who's raised her hand, Ms. Jensen.
Okay, well, we've got, we've got Greg Conlon right now.
Yes, and I, I just wanna make some comments based on the the blackouts and the outages that we've had in Atherton, and I think we all suffered from it very in duration. I think I was out for about twenty-five hours, and others were longer and others were shorter, and I just, I think it brings emphasizes the point that the wires, electrical wires in, in Atherton are a real hazard. And I just think that it, it's appropriate for us to, us being the city, to take some action to bury the wires on a sequence basis over a number of years. I would suggest a twenty-year program. Pebble Beach is doing that right now with their burying the entire forest over twenty years. And I think they're spreading the cost where it's reasonable. If you issue bonds over a thirty-year basis, and, and, you know, it would probably be a thousand dollars a year for thirty years, or something like that for each house. And I think it would be more acceptable, because if we do it under the PG&E, what is the rule, twenty-year? Twenty-A, George, help me. Twenty-A, twenty-B. It's, it takes forever to do it, and you only get a minor amount. You get two percent of the revenues for the city go to this twenty-A fund. And there's a couple million dollars in there now that can be used as a starting startup cost to, to figure out what to do. I would recommend that you form a committee to do it, similar to what you did with the Civic Center. You raised twenty-seven million there. I think this would be more. It would probably be thirty to fifty million. And I think it's worth it. Because if you don't, you know, if somebody got killed, or several people got killed, I think it would be, you know, prove the point that it's too late. We should have done it earlier. So I would suggest that before something like that happens, that you form a committee and figure out how to do it, and put it to the voters and let them decide. If they don't wanna spend the money, that's their choice. But your job is to take it to them and make sure that they understand what you're, why you're doing it, and how much it would cost. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, and I'll remind everyone, this is a a special meeting, and as such, the public comments are to be per items that are on the agenda, which is our housing element, as well as the ratification of the emergency proclamation. So there's somebody online? First, is that correct?
Yes, Diane Jensen, you have the floor.
Diane?
Hi. I share a fence. This has to do with the flooding. I share a fence with Los Lamitas School and the Atherton drainage channel. Should I be financially responsible for the water flow and flooding my home and yard? What actions will the town of Atherton plan to take to mediate flooding and clean up the effects? What actions will the town of Atherton plan to implement to prevent such catastrophic events in the future? And when will these actions be implemented? There's just many problems with the way the water flows from the Alameda de Las Pogos to the school, and then the school takes it and tries to get it to go down the Atherton Channel, and it's not working. It's, it's costing me thousands. Tens of thousands. That's all.
Okay, all right, thank you.
May I speak?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm here to talk about the housing element.
Can you say your name and where, where are you from?
My name is Marty Brill. I live at two-two-six Oak Grove Avenue in Atherton, joining the Menlo Atherton High School. To the extent that one of the resources for high-density housing, and a prominent one is school campuses, and having some familiarity with the law with respect to the rights of districts to do what the hell they want. I think it's probably the worst place you could have high-density housing. The, the schools have, my understanding, almost total control over what they build and where they build it. And if, if housing is encouraged for them, there's no height limit that I think is controllable. I'm interested in knowing if you, somebody has looked into the limitations that may be there. But my experience with their last big project, which was a couple hundred thousand square feet of classroom and administrative space. They pretty much get to do what they want, subject only to the Environmental Quality Act, which is being dumbed down for this purpose. I'm really, I have great concerns about the, my local environment. I have no feeling that the, that Squaw High School District has any interest in any other interest than their own. When they did this rather large project, they didn't add a single parking space to their campus, a campus that puts cars on the street in neighborhoods. My block has no parking signs on it. And we only get a few longer-term parkers there, but we get pickup traffic there every afternoon, parked right in the intersection where you have to get in the opposing lane to make a turn out of our block. The, on their EIR for this last project, we came to agreements with them on a number of subjects that were environmentally related, including lighting, lights that, the tall lights that they built with-
Mr. Brill, you have thirty seconds, please. Just thirty more seconds.
Oh, fine. They've essentially left us no recourse on all of the things that they agreed to, and many of them, they didn't perform. They didn't plant the trees that they cut down without permits. These are heritage jokes that they cut down that impacted our views. Nighttime lighting that's left on all night, lighting that's for special events only. The football field, which was subject to a separate lawsuit and settled by neighbors of mine, has lighting on almost every night of the week. And they're restricted to seven nights a year for home games and one special event for the school. I, I'm terribly concerned about that, and I think it makes these school properties. And by the way, Menlo Atherton High School just, just, or the district raised, I think it was nearly a quarter, a half a million, half a billion-dollar fund for unnamed repairs, maintenance, and improvements of the sites. Well, it, that's plenty to build housing. Thank you.
I would recommend Atherton, there's an Atherton resident, a, a young man that just got elected to the Zavoya School Board. His name escapes me at this point in time. But you can go on the website and find the name of the board member, and I would talk to him about this, since he can directly affect this.
Will do. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Okay, we'll close public comments, and we'll move to Action Item One, which is ratification and certification of the proclamation of local emergencies. George?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, December thirty-first through now, actually, this area of California is subject to a number of rainstorms and events. We issued a proclamation of local emergency on January fourth. That needs to be ratified by the council this evening. It's recommended the council ratify and certify that proclamation of local emergency, making such findings as required under the government code. I do have two changes to it that I'll read into the record so that they're included in the resolution. The first is in an additional whereas. Whereas, the town is requesting federal and state assistance for response and recovery to the December twenty-twenty-two, January twenty-twenty-three storm event. That goes into the whereas section. And then there's two additional findings. Finding number five, request that the governor of the state of California proclaim a state of emergency, which has already been done, and request a federal declaration, which also has been done, to provide assistance funding, but not limited to the California Disaster Assistance Act, Federal Individual Assistance Act, and U.S. Small Business Administration Disaster Declaration to assist with losses and emergency preparedness as required by the town. And number six, town staff are authorized and directed to take any action that may be necessary to seek federal, state, or regional disaster recovery funding. With those additions, it's recommended that the council ratify and certify the proclamation.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none. Comments? Any public comments?
I'd like to make the motion.
Yeah.
I'd like to move that the council ratify the proclamation of local emergency as enacted by the Director of Emergency Services in response to the December thirty-first, twenty-twenty storm events, and to make such findings as required under Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-three, Coran-E, Coran-three, to meet remotely, to ensure the continued health and safety of the public with the additional items that the city manager just read into the record.
Councilmember Holland?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGolia? Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hawkins-Manwellian?
Yes.
And Mayor Whitmer?
Yes. Okay, pass. Item number two is a discussion on revisions to the housing element that we have been working on prior to, and in regards to submission to the, to HCD and to address their comments. So.
Comes over to me.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. During review of this final draft, it was noted that the housing unit table and related ADU production estimates didn't match the final direction of the council that the council gave on December seventeenth. That will be corrected and will match that number from the December seventeenth meeting. This will also be reflected in any associated narrative changes. Most of those changes had to do with the numbers of ADUs, and then where the allocations were for Menlo College units. In addition, the document has gone through some extensive wordsmithing by both the council and staff. As noted to the council in the staff report, there has also been some additional data and narrative added in direct response to HCD comments. Lastly, during this final review, there are a few other minor areas of corrective text changes that will also be made. Most, they're all relatively minor. But overall, the document is in its final form as is presented this evening, with all of the council's current policy directives included. During my one-on-one discussions with council, it was noted that there are council members that are interested in elevating some of the prior sites into the discussion today. Members raised twenty-three Oakwood, the Gilmore House, properties along Bay Road, and properties along El Camino Real as possible discussion points for tonight's meeting. For twenty-three Oakwood, if the council's gonna add that back into the housing element, I would suggest that the council do so as a rezone, not as an overlay. And if the council chooses to add it at twenty units per acre, that would be great. We can reflect that in the very low and low-income categories, as it meets the affordability and feasibility requirements for HCD. But if the council chooses to add it at something less than that, such as ten or fifteen units per acre, that's also good, as it gives us something to point to when HCD asks if we actually have any multifamily zoning. If less than twenty units per acre, we would not be able to count those units as very low or low, but we could count them as moderate or above moderate in the table. For the Gilmore House, if the council is going to add this into the element, I would also suggest the council do so as an eventual rezone at twenty units per acre. The town could ultimately build six to ten workforce housing units on the site. It's currently occupied by the Gilmore House. For the properties along Bay Road, if the council's gonna add this to the element, I would suggest the council do this at a minimum as a, as an overlay at twenty units per acre. A rezone would be even better. Development of these locations would be property owner-driven, but we would be able to add some numbers to the table as very low or low and reduce the reliance on ADUs. For properties along El Camino Real, here again, if the council's gonna add it, I would suggest to do so as a rezone at a minimum, or a rezone, or at a minimum, an overlay at twenty units per acre. Development of these locations would also be property-only dependent, but we would be able to add some numbers to the table in the very low or low category, and again, reduce the reliance on ADUs. Development here or on Bay Road could also be considered by the town, should the town ever have available funding or the opportunity to actually purchase property and move any development forward, as was mentioned by one of the former council members during public comment. Because timing is short, if the council wants to add any of these items into the element, staff needs some affirmative direction this evening to do so. Ultimately, the town must adopt findings, adopt the housing element, and submit it to the state by the January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three deadline. There's simply no more time to make significant adjustments. Staff is present here this evening to answer any questions the council may have, and there's also a representative from Goldfarb and Lippman online as well.
So, right now, let's have, if there's any council questions with regards to what George said, as well as the, the new version of the housing element that was circulated around. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, my question is, let's see. In regards to making any changes tonight, there's a broad range of options that we're looking at, as the city manager articulated. I'd like to ask the Goldfarb and Lippman representative, the housing element consultant, who's here this evening, if there is any, there are any specific recommendations that she could articulate that would work, that they could do in response, that would make the housing element a little bit more palatable when we resubmit without us going through all of the specifics that the city manager just articulated.
All right. Can we get that answer now?
Yes. Nazine, is that, did, did I make myself clear?
Yes. Through the, through the chair. I, I, there are quite a number of the comments from HCD that have not been responded to. Some of them are more minor comments that probably just require a sentence or two further of explanation. So I'll focus on the more major areas that I think HCD is likely to also focus on if the housing element is not revised to make it responsive to their comments. The first being the multifamily zoning. You know, as of right now, HCD's comments indicate that they don't think that there's adequate narrative or programming in the housing element for multifamily zoning, and so that would be addressed by the city manager's comments, or, you know, recommendations of potentially rezoning or adopting overlay zones for those various properties in sight. In addition, some of the affirmatively furthering fair housing analysis for both the ADU programming and the SB nine programming that has been flagged by HCD as being insufficient at this point. And so additional language should be added as far as that, particularly around how the ADU programming and SB nine programming would address segregation in, in the city, or in the town, rather, my apologies. Additionally, their HCD's comments indicate that there are no, there's no analysis right now of either the needs of extremely low-income households, or how those needs will be addressed. I don't think, in my review, I even saw extremely low-income households addressed at all in the housing element, and so that is one area that should be addressed. Similarly, with the housing needs of individuals with disabilities, I think that is another area of HCD's comments that I have not seen addressed. Those are, I think, the major ones. As I mentioned, there are a number of other ones, for instance, related to availability of financing for some of these, some of this housing. Let me, give me one moment so that I can kind of pull out some of these smaller ones, so that you can get a sense of what I'm talking about. Yeah, there's, there's some discussion about access to transit that could be beefed up in response to HCD's comments. So, but the, the four that I mentioned initially, as far as multifamily zoning, the analysis of the ADU and SB nine programming, housing for extremely low-income households, and housing for individuals with disabilities, I think are the reoccurring themes that I noted in my review that have not been addressed in this current draft of the housing element. Happy to take any further questions as well.
You wanna follow on?
Yeah, I just have a follow-on. So with these four, six items that you just articulated, does Goldfarb and Lippman have responses already drafted for us? I'm sorry if they had already been presented to me, and we rejected them, but I'm just wondering if that's something that you have available.
So I actually think that the the principal planner on this is the one who has been doing the drafting of the language. I have not been. I'm happy to assist with that. But as far as these, the, the comments that I made, I don't believe that there is currently draft language that has been presented to the council for review. It would be, it would have to be written up.
If I could add on to that through the chair, that, excuse me. I know that a lot of the work has been undertaken by Lisa and other staff. We, me, I personally provided a list of all the new programs that are required, but either required by state law or requested by HCD. Those have been included. I know that, and maybe Lisa can talk a little bit more about that. But I'm pretty sure that, you know, as I think Nas' point of view is really spot on. I think the overriding issue is, is, is really primarily the, the fact that you need multifamily housing zoning. So, and that the, and that trying to accommodate your lower-income arena through ADUs is not gonna fly with the state.
That I'll, I'll, I'll pass right now. Go ahead.
You're done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Any other questions at this point in time? Go ahead.
Just to be clear, we do have multifamily housing we're proposing on schools. So are you saying that that's insufficient?
Not necessarily. It's just that that has been the big, biggest need to discuss where you're going to put multifamily housing. And whether or not, I, I don't know off the top of my head, and Lisa could probably speak to this. You know, whether or not those proposals on school property is, number one, will it meet all of the lower-income need, first of all? And secondly, is there a way? I mean, there's gonna be an issue, potential issue, and I think Barb Couts from Goldfarb- is there a way, I mean, there's going to be an issue, per, potential issue, and I think Barb Couts from Goldfarb brought this up before. The, 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 an issue with fair housing, if only the people who go to the school or the students or the people who work there are the ones that have that can live there. There has to be some housing that is available to people from, who, who can apply for it from anywhere to come and live in, it potentially live in Atherton. So the idea is that the main concern from a fair housing point of view is not being restricted to certain kinds of people. Um, i.e. people who own, who are paid by the school district, for example. That's a, that's one fair housing issue. And I think if Nas has, has other thoughts on that, or actually Mona.
Yeah, sure. I think my only additional thought on that is, is just that it's good practice to, um, create or designate additional buffer sites in case, um, any of the sites that you've already designated um, do not develop at the, um, densities that you've indicated. Um, so those school sites, if they don't develop at those densities, um, you could fall out of compliance potentially, um. And at, at, at every point in the planning period, so from twenty twenty-three and twenty thirty-one, you have to demonstrate that you have adequate sites to meet your arena numbers. Um, so if any of those sites in the next couple of years develops at below that, you're going to have to designate additional sites. And so you're also sort of front loading work here for yourself. If you do that at this point, rather than sort of scrambling later on, if that happens, to designate additional sites.
So Mayor, I have a follow-up about that, about the college, uh, and the schools, uh, multifamily, uh, development. I've heard, or it's been, I mean, I'm, let me just ask the question. Do you think that the arena, uh, the, um, Housing Commission, oh, is, will believe that that would be developed because, uh, without financing in place and a developer in place to actually build those, uh, housing, uh, projects, multifamily housing projects, uh, as we submit?
I will say that on page sixty-seven of the draft housing element, there is language, um, based on correspondence with the college president and staff that they are very interested and committed to developing that. And from the town's perspective, the goal here is to plan for and program sufficient housing to meet our arena obligations. But it's not our job to guarantee or to force that that development actually occur. Um, having said that, um, the government code in the housing element, um, chapters discusses that when a jurisdiction plans for a twenty per, um, twenty unit per acre, uh, multifamily project, that that is presumptively going to meet your very low, low income needs. And so, um, your legal staff and I think your professional staff are recommending that we do that so that we get the benefit of that rebuttable presumption.
I, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Nazine or, or Mona or even Diana and Lisa. Uh, we've included Menlo College in our housing element in prior cycles, and some of that housing has not been done. So one of the requirements of HCD this time around is if we're going to include them again, we're required to include them as a by right uh, development, twenty units per acre, whatever that is. And the housing element currently includes them at that proposed level.
But have we gotten an updated letter from Stephen Weiner about, uh, the, 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 the larger development?
I have not.
Is one of them worked? Does anybody know?
I, have you heard, uh, Councilmember DeGolia?
Yeah.
Does he have financing? Does he have a finance or there was a one-time discussion on architect?
Uh, I understand that there, that he's been offered funds to do a schematic of what the design would be and that that would be paid for by residents of the town.
Okay, all right.
But we haven't gotten the letter yet and we can, we need to get the letter to confirm all of that.
Yeah, he may even show up. We can ask him.
But, but I have a question. So the issue of financing at the schools has been raised and is that only because we use the schools as a potential housing site for pro, the prior arena cycle? Uh, because the idea of, uh, zoning for twenty units an acre on private property, there's no assurance that there's financing for that. And there's no proposal for financing for that.
Correct, but that would be a new program. Um, it's very important to HCD that the programs that are offered in the town's housing element are capable of being accomplished and are feasible. So they don't want us to simply identify projects for the sake of identifying them, that we believe there's no way then, uh, of realistically coming to fruition.
Isn't that financing necessary to identify since he's done interviews saying that they won't build it without financing? Isn't that a big part of that?
The current letter in the draft housing element does articulate exactly what you mentioned, that there, they, they need, they have a need for funding, but they have no funding priority set for housing. It's for other uses. So in future conversations with them and future conversations as part of we went, as we went through the housing element, there was a requirement that we, uh, provide twenty units per acre by right in order to even include Menlo College in there because it was one of the ones that we'd identified specifically in the past as a development opportunity to satisfy the needs and it never happened. The financing part of it is, uh, I think not necessarily required, but it does lend more credibility to its feasibility.
George, have you been contacted by any developers with regards to taking steps, uh, based on the outcome of our housing plan?
You mean with respect to a builder's remedy solution?
Yeah.
Yes, I, I have had a, a very recent phone call with the property owner at Twenty-three Oakwood, uh, who expressed that he does have an interest in continuing to move his project forward and that he's well aware of the requirements of a builder's remedies, not something he wants to pursue, uh, but he's well aware of those requirements.
Good. Any other question? Any other questions here, um, the council? Okay, we'll open it up to, uh, public comment. John?
Thank you. My name is Tom Georgie.
Oh, Tom, sorry.
Sergeant.
Sorry.
Tom, John, just don't call me late for dinner. So Bob Pollado said to me at the end of the last council meeting, something along the lines of February first, look out, he's going to do what he wants to do anyway. It was an ominous warning. I guess I need to worry right now ahead of February first, based on George's earlier recommendations regarding the multifamily zoning on private property. But I have a question about the builder's remedy and self-certification. Uh, I planned on asking you at the neighborhood meetings, but we've not been invited to one. So how do we get involved with that? Um, that whole thing feels pretty exclusionary. I, if you don't get invited, you don't get invited. Um, I don't know.
We have two open meetings. Open means anybody can come.
Okay. We'd like to get the info for that.
Yeah, one's tomorrow at Menlo College and the other one is the following Monday, I believe, right?
I know there's.
We know about those, talking about the neighborhood community meetings.
Yeah. Yeah, there, there's a number of residents that have approached the town and in the interest of doing, and inviting the town to their home to invite some of their neighbors to talk about the housing element. If you would like something like that done at your home, I'm happy to come and, and do that.
Perhaps. So, um, I'm not fully informed. I believe self-certification does not stop the builder's remedy. Self-certification leaves it open. So the housing element would likely be out of compliance with state law until a complying six-cycle housing element is adopted, what is likely. Uh, this is from the A-BAG information where they list the five findings that a municipality can use site to standoff, stave off builder's remedy. Goes on to say, HCD approval is not required for a housing element to be found substantially compliant with state law. State law provides that a city or county may adopt its own findings, explaining why its housing element is substantially compliant with state law despite HCD's findings. Section six, five, five, eight, five F. However, HCD is authorized to refer agencies to the attorney general if it founds a housing, finds a housing element out of compliance with state law. Section six, five, five, eight, five J. So it appears a town of Atherton's getting ready for some legal wrangling here. Um, seems like getting an approved housing element is a safeguard against that, right? I do not believe the project at twenty-three Oakwoods enough to get an approved housing element. Um, the erratas are gonna, at twenty units per acre, it's a, it's a presumed low income need, presumed rebuttable presumption, Mona, right? Rebuttable. So I'll be sure to let HCD know that those are not actually low income because he's not going to build any low income. It's going to be presumed and it's a rebuttable presumption. So that's only six units. Six units is actually going to tip the balance? No. It's not going to tip the balance. Six low income units not going to tip the balance. What could tip the balance is twenty units per acre or forty units per acre on something that's not private property. Councilman DeGolia has said since the beginning, you can't develop low income units when it's a million an acre. So the only thing that is not private property in this equation is Gilmore House or property like Bob said at the beginning of the meeting. The factory, the factory, the, 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 the town buys and develops themselves. So.
George, you one minute, sir.
Yeah, one minute. Okay, thank you, Anthony. So I would ask the council to consider putting skin in the game. Those are Diana's words. Um, multifamily housing on private property. Anyway, it shakes out. Is low hanging fruit. It's empty calories. And I hope you would align your heart with the interests of the people that drive this town, which is private property owners. And put this, the town where the burden is, not on private property. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comments? Jim?
Can I speak?
Uh, well, you next, as Jim would get up.
He can, he can go if he wants.
Go ahead, you're standing there.
Okay, uh, Jim Massey, Seven Lloyd Drive, Atherton. When Jordan was describing properties possibly to put into the housing element, was loosely defined comment of El Camino Real. Can somebody tell me what we're talking about on El Camino Real? Is it my neighborhood? Is it across the street from me? Is it right here on, on Maple and Walnut? Is it on Nora Way? Down by Stockwedge or is it, as Bob had said, down, uh, on Selby Lane? What are we talking about? We're talking about two, three hundred homes value locally that will be destroyed by putting housing multi-story in a place you haven't defined. So if somebody could just say, George, what, what are we talking about? We're talking about specifically El Camino. Also, then what happened to the property on Atherton Avenue, one seventy Atherton Avenue? There's eight acres there. That disappeared. The vineyard disappeared. So once again, we're talking loosely about El Camino. The smaller homes in Atherton, which is under the current press for equity, et cetera, et cetera. You're targeting the smaller property owners and alleviating not even considering the larger properties and it's pure cut discrimination. And once again, nobody can tell me when you're talking about El Camino. What are you talking about? Right, that was, but that was, that, that was from Bob, just as a public comment, just yours. That was not from the city. The other properties were back in. So once again, can somebody answer? Wait, excuse me, Liz, I'm, I'm an old, old, old deaf guy.
Yeah, we haven't decided that at this point in time. That's what this meeting is going to discuss, Jim.
Okay, all right. Well, it's a lo, it, it's a lot of properties on El Camino and a lot of them behind it, the property values, you know, Northgate, Southgate, so.
Yeah, I understand and, you know.
No, thank you. But what I have, I have one question about tomorrow night's meeting.
Yes.
Where at Menlo College is it going to be? Is it?
At El Camino Hall.
El Camino Hall, okay.
So if you come in, park in that front lot and keep walking to the right, and then there's a, like a little um, quadrangle, go to the center of it.
Okay, it's, it's not Florence Moore, it's El Camino Hall then.
Yeah.
Okay, excuse me. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, he didn't go to the debates. Yes.
The meeting that, uh, memophologists were within.
Right, that's correct.
It's actually really hard to find.
If you go, if you go to, they'll have some signs, I'm sure, but if you go, you park in that front pro parking lot, there's a sign that has the whole layout of the campus. Look for El Camino Hall. But it's to the right towards Alejandro.
I know where he is going. I went to school there.
Okay, well, there you go.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, my name is Scott Wiley and, uh, I live at twenty-two Oakwood, both in Atherton. Um, twenty-two, of course, is across the street from twenty-three, uh, which has been a subject of, uh, debate and thought, uh, by this group for quite a while. Uh, and appropriately so, as the housing element is such a critical lever and tool for any council to have at its dis, disposal. Sitting where we are now, uh, as a family on Oakwood, uh, we've got firsthand view of what current Oakwood life is like. And it's defined in good measure, uh, by the residential nature of the citizens who are clustered around Oakwood and goes into Redwood City as well. Uh, so it's not a fringe area. It's part of a continuing, uh, uh, series of residential parcels used in line with that zoning. It should be continued. Uh, are, we reacted from the very beginning, examining some of the proposals with not a, a little bit of dismay, I must say considerable dismay. This council has behaved in a fashion, um, of acknowledged a desire to be seen as a prudent decision-making body. I think that is a noble and appropriate goal for any council like this to be aware of. And, uh, uh, this, uh, council, uh, at least, uh, in discussions has indi, has observed and indicated the, you know, what, what's obvious. Changes like this are generally one way. You don't undo them because of all the complexity that's involved. So the decision that you're making has, you know, management of that asymmetry is that the consequences are going to be known years into the future with certainty. But between now and then, I think one can predict pretty well what will happen. And one of the issues that is of concern to us is the amount of traffic that's going to be imposed on Oakwood. Oakwood is a residential Atherton street. But it has that feel to it. It has that narrowness to it. Um, you could describe it as country-like perhaps, uh, but it is something that is maintained through Oakwood, if you will, and one that we would not like to put at risk by changing. We think that the current zoning is appropriate, uh, and should continue as we go forward. It should not be used as an element to, uh, uh, submit as part of changes to that, to the housing element, at least in terms of the current, uh, form of it. I think the last item that I'd like to touch on is the management of traffic on Oakwood is something that's not addressed. There is visible changes in terms of the di, the difficulty of transitioning from Oakwood to Selby. If you look at the afternoon and evening, uh, commute hours, that's a left turn movement either way. And the backups are continuing. Uh, it's safety for pedestrians, safety for schoolchildren, safety for drivers. And the amount of additional vehicle traffic which is created by a density in the line of twenty-three Oakwood, it's not appropriate. It's not prudent. Uh, it's not the kind of decision that we think should be taken. Uh, I appreciate, um, granted me some time this morning and, uh, this afternoon. Uh, and we will continue to be part of this process as it does very, very consequentially affect us. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Mr. Wiley. Are there any other public comments in this room before we see what's online? Yes.
You know, I've been investigating converting my pool house into an ADU unit.
And before the year end, I was told that the fees were going to be changed by state law. And then I came in the first week in January and found out that the. Counsel or the staff or somebody decided that they were gonna. Put the fees back on. So I'm not sure. What the intent was or what the. Whether I got bad information or what, but I, right now I've been told that the fees are back on and I suggest that they be eliminated if you're. Trying to use the ADUs as a source of of meeting your obligation under the housing element.
The council has not had any discussion other than some proposals. Uh, to decide to do anything with the fees. We have a fee study that we normally cover and that'll be later on this year.
But part of the housing element is that we eliminate the planning fees for ADUs.
Right.
That's in the housing element. The housing element hasn't been adopted yet.
So I, you're saying that once the housing element is adopted, that that assuming it stays in there, that it will be eliminated?
Uh, I think the housing element gives certain timelines to when different actions will occur. And I don't recall the specific timeline. Many of them are by July of this year.
By July or by in the first year. In the first year after adoption.
First year after adoption.
Yes.
Well, I think I can. Go ahead and pay him and not wait.
Okay, any other comments in this room? Any comments online?
I see none online.
Okay, then we're going to close public comments and bring it back.
Wait, we just got a hand up as soon as we said that we got two, sorry.
Who was it?
Alyssa Purim, I'm giving him a chance to.
Okay, unmute yourself and introduce yourself, please. Where are you from?
Hi, my name is Ally Saperman and I'm speaking on behalf of the Housing Action Coalition. I'm going to be really clear here. Um, is not above the law. If the city decides to move forward with this housing element as is, it will not be certified. And it will be in violation of state law. Been working on housing elements regionally and generally when HCD submits their response letter, it's a few pages at most. The letter that Atherton received was sixteen pages. And these comments need to be taken extremely seriously. The heart of the issue surrounds multifamily housing and it's critical that the city looks beyond ADUs for multifamily housing and sites for multifamily housing. Must be in areas of opportunity uh, in order to be in accordance with AFFH. And housing at the school district is not an adequate solution either without evidence that it will actually be developed within this Rena cycle. You must identify additional sites or you will lose local control. I hope that's not what it takes for housing to move forward. But I welcome opportunities of the builder's remedy. Do appreciate the council and the staff for trying to address um. This on a rather tight timeline. Um, but you have received a ton of comment letters and there are a ton of people in the community who are happy to be supportive. Identifying additional sites and I think we can get to a good and compliant housing element. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jeremy Levine.
Jeremy, please introduce yourself and where you're from.
Good evening, Atherton City Council, resident staff. Really appreciate your time tonight to talk about this issue and the really exceptional amount of time that the council has dedicated. To discussing the housing element with the community. It's a tough conversation when you have, you know, the the state law, the the need of the entire state. For more housing in this very dire crisis and then also. The the varied preferences of Atherton residents all pulling in different directions and. I'm not here to talk about the state law or, you know, how to meet everyone's preferences. I'm here to to answer a a question that people have been kind of getting at in their comments, but but I haven't heard. Discussed in full, which is, is affordable housing possible in Atherton? And if so, what can the city actually do to make it possible? Make it work. So Atherton has pursued ADUs and. There are all the city has really committed to implementing a lot of new policies to promote ADUs. It, I don't think that it's enough to to support the argument that sixty percent of those ADUs are going to be for low and very low income residents. But they're important new policies and the city deserves recognition for that. And the city is also pursuing housing on school sites. And I think as as your new lawyer mentioned, there's no mention of extremely low income housing. There's no real attempt to address the needs of large families or the disabled. And these are all groups that are required to be considered in the housing element and for specific action to be taken to address their needs. And so the question is, what can Atherton do to actually get the kind of housing, really one hundred percent affordable housing? Or mixed income projects with some affordable component that actually meets the needs of these groups? And one answer is city-owned land. Being dedicated to an affordable housing developer. And so I think it's really impressive that the city is starting to consider how it can actually dedicate. City-owned land to subsidize affordable housing and fill in that gap. The city can also subsidize with money. We haven't been discussing raising revenue, but but I think that if. The the city wants to really understand how affordable housing gets built. Taxes and then raising money to actually subsidize affordable housing is is one of the the direct ways. And then there is upzoning a bunch of private property. So maybe Atherton could participate in the county-wide Camino Real plan and implement an inclusionary zoning ordinance. And if ten or fifteen percent of a lot of housing units built in an area were affordable, then you'd actually create like a place where where. Different families of different incomes can live. And I think that a lot of the places that are mixed income and mixed use are. In very, very high demand all over the country. And Atherton would in fact be benefiting the community to create some portion. That actually is accessible to people from a wide range of backgrounds and and different types. So. Uh, thank you for your consideration and I hope that you will pursue strategies that can actually get some affordable housing built in the next eight years.
All right, thank you very much.
Next, we have Jordan Grimes, followed by Ellen James.
Well, why don't we have Mike go first? Sure, he's here.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike McPherson, one, two, three Watkins Avenue. I live across the street from Holbert Palmer Park. I have a tremendous amount of empathy for the city council and what you're trying to do and what you're dealing with here. Um, it's a little bit of whack-a-mole every time you bring up one area. Um, the people in that area don't want it understandably. Mayor DeGol, then Mayor DeGol, you mentioned at the last meeting that um. You bring up a new area and then people from that area decide that they want to come in and object. When you speak about the Gilmore House, you're speaking about the only public park in the town of Atherton. I don't think that. Putting a lot of units there is going to satisfy the housing element unless, as also has been discussed. Multifamily housing is allowed on some private property in town. So I would ask that um, if the Gilmore House. That is Holbert Palmer Park. Be subject to, I think as George mentioned, six to ten workforce housing units that. In addition to that and in conjunction with that. You're go, you should also um, allow for some private property development on multifamily and other areas. That makes sense. I think at the last meeting is mentioned that there'd be criteria for where the places should be and um. Near transportation, near services for people who um, are low income. Needs to be part of the criteria. Holbert Palmer doesn't meet that that criteria on either basis. So. Um, I'll just leave it at that and say if uh, i- i- if it's a small number of workforce housing, I don't think there'd be. A tremendous amount of objection from the neighborhood. Anything more than that, I think there would be and it's a matter of. Then publicizing it to the neighbors and then the neighbor, those neighbors are going to come in as the other neighbors have come in. So um, I hope you'll consider doing it broad brace or broad base throughout the town and not focus on any. One particular area, particularly the town's only public park. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. All right, who's online?
Jordan Grimes.
Jordan?
Yes, good evening, uh, Council Honorable Mayor. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Jordan Grimes. I'm the Peninsula and South Bay Resilience Manager for Green Belt Alliance. We're an environmental nonprofit decade to the preservation of open space as well as the creation of sustainable climate resilient communities throughout the Bay Area. Creating public policy to engender sustainable infill development, especially in jobs-rich uh, and resource-rich areas. Like the Atherton area and on the peninsula in general, key to those goals. Um, we echo the comments and concerns of previous speakers regarding the element. Uh, the element as written relies far too heavily on ADUs. A strategy HCD has already rejected in numerous other jurisdictions. Um, moreover, a heavy reliance uh, on ADUs doesn't meet the standards around affirmatively for their housing. The strategy proffered by Mr. Polito uh, earlier is a good one and I would encourage exploration of such. Um, with regard to the school sites listed in the element, I would note that in order for sites to be accepted by HCD. There needs to be substantial evidence of development or redevelopment uh, and capacity calculations must be realistic. Given what we've heard from uh, from Menlo School, it sounds like that is, you know, not the case. Um, additionally, as was mentioned earlier, given that these sites have been on Atherton site inventory in the past. And haven't been developed, the bar is very, very high for Atherton to prove uh, to HCD that there's a likelihood of new housing actually be being constructed there. Um, there's also been considerable discussion uh, both tonight and and in the past about the builder's remedy. And I just want to say this, the surest way to stop the builder's remedy, the surest way to ensure that you, you know, do do not uh, fall victim to it. Is to commit to a good faith effort to comply with state housing law by legalizing multifamily housing throughout the town. And creating the policies and programs necessary to allow a range of housing types to be built in the town. I'm from the peninsula. I'm born and raised here. Change is hard. Um, it's it's hard for all of us, but Atherton and the broader peninsula. Truly will benefit from an action of these policies uh, and and more socioeconomic diversity and the allowance of. More types of people to be able to live within our borders. So I urge you to uh, pursue them and and give this weight and appreciate your time very much tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, there's Ellen Jamison.
Ellen?
Yes, hi, um, this is Ellen Jamison. I live at sixty-six Merrymont Avenue in Atherton. Uh, I want to echo um, uh, the sentiments of a number of people that uh, I I. I certainly respect all of the efforts that uh, city council has has made. This is a very, very difficult job. And I appreciate all your your hard work and efforts to try to um. Uh, meet the requirements of the law while addressing the concerns of the uh, the residents of Atherton. And that it's not an easy job at all. Um, uh, I believe strongly though that uh, planning for more housing in our community is vital. To our region's vitality and survival. And I think that Atherton can be a part of a regional. Housing solution while maintaining its character as a family-oriented residential community. I'm supportive of the uh, increase in density suggested at Menlo College and Menlo School. And the idea of making it easier to uh, build ADUs in Atherton. Um, I would also support uh, an inclusionary housing fee that could generate funds to support affordable housing. Um, but I don't think that ADUs and school sites will ultimately prove to be sufficient. Uh, to uh, meet our fair share of regional housing needs. Whether or not our um, uh, our draft housing element is approved by HCD. I think that during the course of the eight years, um, we will end up having to identify additional sites. So I would su- support strategies to develop criteria. Uh, for how to um, identify appropriate locations for multifamily housing. Um, with on private property in uh, in the town. Um, I think we uh, can do um, multifamily overlay zones. We can look at higher density um, at sites uh, on Oakwood, Oakwood and Atherton Avenue. Um, off of um, Alameda. Um, and uh, I think we could also add to the housing base by looking at changing. And reducing minimum lot sizes and dimensions. Um, uh, and uh, but all of these things I think need to be considered. Um, in a comprehensive principle-based approach. Um, so uh, again, I I don't envy you your difficult job. I know you're working really hard on this. And uh, I really appreciate all you have done so far. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tom Georgie with Stephanie Sargent again. You guys obviously have a hard job. We know this. If it seems to me that conceptually. If I were sitting on this council, I'd have a real hard time. Picking and choosing who loses in multifamily. Upzoning and just picking a spot. Because you know that if you pick twenty-three Oakwood at twenty units per acre. That there's somebody whose sanctuary is going to be absolutely devastated, devastated. Devastated. So if you are. To avoid somebody, you familiar with the mounds in Hillsborough? Anyone familiar with that? High-end apartments in Hillsborough? It's like twelve stories. If if you're trying to stave off the builder's remedy and someone doing that at one seventy Atherton. An eight-story apartment building in the center of town. And that's really what we're afraid of with the builder's remedy. Then it seems to me, what I'm hearing is some good ideas. Then pick the arteries in town where density is appropriate, near transportation. And apply it on a more democratic basis, zoning those properties to be multifamily residential at reasonable density. Twenty units per acre on a one-point-five acre parcel in the middle of a residential property is unreasonable. And it would be unconscionable if you guys put that on this housing element. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else online?
No.
Okay, then.
So I'd like to make a comment.
Yeah.
Um, I'm going to go back to my law handout that I gave everybody earlier.
Okay, close public comment.
Oh, yes, please.
Yeah, so. So with with no other public comments, then we're going to close public comments and bring it back to the council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. You know, we keep talking about uh, creating criteria and um, a number of months ago. Um, we were tasked as a council to go around and try to figure out stuff. And Diana, Vice Mayor, and I went around and before we um, went around and looked at things. We created uh, our criteria. And I'm just going to read that to you because this is the mindset that we've all been working from, even though it hasn't been codified or. Formally approved by a council as like a resolution, but the objective was to identify appropriate locations within town. To create multifamily um, town homestyle housing units to meet our Rena housing mandate. That's the objective. I mean, bottom line, our objective is to. Meet our Rena uh, uh, housing mandate because we don't want to be subjected to. Uh, being out of compliance and having a lot of penalties. Our goal was to use the very minimum number of parcels to achieve the Rena mandate. While maintaining the rural neighborhood look and feel of Atherton. Uh, we love Atherton. We live in Atherton, have lived in Atherton for over twenty years. And, you know, I don't want to destroy Atherton's character. None of us wants to destroy Atherton's character in any way, shape or form. And the rationale was to look at locations uh, based on the final following criteria. Minimal impact on remaining neighborhood environment. Uh, next to um, uh, high-density cor- transit corridors such as El Camino or Valparaiso. Next to neighboring communities such as Redwood City or Menlo Park where there are either similar multifamily developments. And retail or schools for the multifamily. So that is kind of the mindset that we went around and looked at and we did consider. Uh, a number of recommendations that we brought to council, not to be inclusive or not to be uh, all uh. Think that that would be, uh, everything would be adopted. But those are some of the things that we've been talking about. And we've really tried to not do a multifamily uh, upzoning uh, situation. There were things that have been brought to us in the past that we've said, no, we're gonna try something else. But it looks like from all of our advisors that we need to take another look at our housing element before we submit. So that we can be in compliance when we resubmit.
Okay, thank you. So what we need to do is have a more or less of a general discussion on areas that we think might be appropriate. And then, once we get those listed, George, you could write those down, then we can come around and get the council to individually decide whether or not that one should be inclusive or not. I think that that's probably the best way to do it. Do you have a different idea, George?
I don't. I think in in general, the town's been talking about twenty-three Oakwood properties along the western side of El Camino Real.
Right.
The Gilmore House and Bay Road.
Okay. Does anybody want to take one of those and discuss yet? Go ahead.
Not taking one of those specifically, but on the subject in general, I think that the criteria that Councilwoman Lewis stated is criteria that we looked at when we started a year ago.
Yes.
And we developed it between when we started about November of twenty twenty-one and March of twenty twenty-two. And as a result of that, we proposed in the very first iteration of the housing element, certain properties to be zoned zoned with an overlay for multifamily because we were pushed by our housing advisors to do that as we're continuing to be pushed to do. There was a significant reaction from the community to the concept of locating that multifamily housing in their areas. And as some people have noted in their comments tonight, it's like you can't do it right because wherever you propose to put it, whoever lives around that area objects. And that has been quite, that that probably is the most constant, we can say, that we've experienced in the last year and three months that we've been very seriously dealing with the subject. In beginning in March and particularly in May, I think we changed a focus from looking at the number three hundred and forty-eight and how we could achieve that required RENA housing number to looking at the issue of affordable housing. And the RENA requirements both deal with the number of three hundred and forty-eight and they deal with affordable housing. And we started to really struggle with how can we deal with locating affordable housing in Atherton. And I would say I was particularly challenged by an email that we received from Jeremy Levine, who gave public comment tonight, which I think came in July. And in that email, he said, you should really think about what the genuine affordable housing needs are in Atherton and how you can achieve that. And I've, for six months, really struggled with that. And the reason I struggled with it is because I realized that I don't think there's any possible way to build affordable housing if someone has to buy the land in Atherton. Because the land costs four million dollars for a half an acre on El Camino. So the lower expensive land, like like Jim Massey likes to say, he lives in the low-cost neighborhood in the poverty pocket. It's four million dollars a half an acre. And with, at a cost of four million dollars a half an acre, I don't believe that you can reasonably build affordable housing. So rather than focus on, and so that question that he raised really challenged me. I think we need affordable housing in Atherton. I I I think there's a critical need, not, and and the housing element causes us not just to look at our own location, but it causes us to look at the region around us as well as our own location. And I think that's appropriate. The reason I want us to qualify in our housing element with the requirements of the state is not because of some threat from some builder's remedy or because the state's gonna take over our zoning. I actually think the builder's remedy is only gonna apply to Atherton on one property. I don't think we're gonna see builders come in and build affordable housing in Atherton because to do the builder's remedy, you both have to own the land, so they have to buy that acre for eight or ten million dollars. And they have to build twenty percent of those housing is affordable housing. I don't think that's gonna happen when the cost of land is eight to ten million dollars an acre. Now, I might be wrong. Maybe we'll see some developers come in and do that. But I think the only realistic builder's remedy claim in Atherton is gonna come at twenty-three Oakwood, where the current property owner wants to build multifamily housing. And he can do it, and he could meet the affordability requirement because he already owns the land. Now, whether he will actually meet the affordability requirement, as we've heard the public comment that he won't, I I I think that's probably right. We'll see. I mean, the property goes for a lot of money in Atherton. And so how do you meet the need? We have a real need. We have people that live and work in Atherton that need affordable housing, particularly people that work in Atherton, work on properties, on private properties in Atherton, and work at schools in Atherton. So one way we've addressed this is we've said, okay, the easy place to authorize increased density in Atherton is at a place where there's absolutely critical need, which is at the schools. And we're doing that. We're we're, part of our housing element is to approve twenty units an acre at Menlo School and at Menlo College and forty units an acre in a particular location at Menlo College, where Menlo College has said they're interested in building a unit that's a forty to sixty-unit apartment building. And to authorize that to be four stories high, which is, there, I don't think there's any three stories high building in Atherton. So that's a real genuine change, attempting to meet the needs that we're obligated to attempt to meet. And I think we need to work really hard to create this housing element so it will qualify. I just am feel extremely challenged with how you can build affordable housing if you have to buy the land. That's the reason that we, in May, really started to focus on the ADUs. And when you look at what we've done in ADUs over the past two years, we've actually built twenty-seven ADUs or J-ADUs a year. That's, that is the number that's been built over each of the last two years. Well, that's a big deal. I I know our how our current draft of the housing element says thirty-six, and we think we could go from twenty-seven to thirty-six because we got more than two hundred responses from residents that aren't building new houses that have said they're willing to convert a unit or to build a new unit so they'd have an ADU. And we've been challenged with, well, that doesn't mean they're gonna get rented and certainly doesn't mean they're gonna get rented at affordable rates. I actually think that almost all the ADUs that do get rented in Atherton get rented at pretty affordable rates. The question is how many get rented? So we we don't know. And the town is seriously undertaking a survey of people that own ADUs to find that out. I, to me, that's the best we can do. But if, but if the state will say, well, we don't care if you actually build it or if it actually can be built, you just zone it for twenty an acre. That's what I, that's how I read it. They say if you zone it for twenty an acre, then they'll assume that it will be built and there'll be a certain amount of low and very low income. I'm very concerned about that because if it doesn't happen, it doesn't meet the need we have, and we have a real need. So I feel like it's an extremely difficult challenge, not just a difficult challenge because every time you try to build, you you try to locate some increased density, whoever lives near that objects to it, which we know has occurred. But also because I just don't have faith that it can be done if somebody has to buy the property.
So I I agree with you, Rick. But we have had at least one, one person, as you mentioned, and as George mentioned, comment about the builder's remedy. So if that builder is going to build, you know, wants to build regardless, okay? If if they do the builder's remedy, they do it however way they want to do it with the density that they want to have. If they don't, if if we rezonate or overlay it with, say, something like ten or twelve or fifteen, not as high as twenty. I know George would like us to do twenty, but, you know, the neighbors have talked about a smaller number would be more tolerable as long as it was Atherton-ish. You know, we then will have the ordinances or can write the ordinances that will control that it is will be Atherton-ish, that it will have the proper setback so as not to encroach on the neighbors, that, you know, those items that we want to cover would be covered. You know, the the property has very few trees on it. And, you know, as as George pointed out, i- if if in fact he's prepared to go that way, then it'd be better if we could control it at a, at a, you know, at a density that we feel comfortable with and that the neighbors feel comfortable with. That's, you know, I think that that's something we should consider at this point in time. And I know Stephanie doesn't want to have that. But we've had, we've had the the public comment.
So are you suggesting that we, you you had suggested let's go property by property, so shall we discuss twenty-three Oakwood?
Yeah. We would.
Well, I can't support any rezoning of twenty-three Oakwood unless at a minimum, there's the requirement that it be, that it include twenty percent affordable housing. What we need is affordable housing. We don't need new, I mean, I think there's a market for new unaffordable townhouses in Atherton. There's people that want to live into Atherton that want to move out of their houses, which probably are ready to be torn down when somebody comes in and pays them ten million dollars for their acre. And they want to move into a smaller property where they don't have the landscaping obligation. They want to stay in Atherton. I absolutely believe there's a market for that. But those houses, those houses aren't gonna be affordable. They're gonna be two to four, six, four to six million dollars for a three thousand square foot townhouse.
And when they, when they were talking, they were talking about housing for teachers and
But we need, that's what we need. We need housing for teachers and we need housing for members of the community that need affordable housing. So if we're gonna do any kind of zoning here, we have to include a minimum of twenty percent affordability.
Okay, I guess is it possible that we could, if we zone it, we can require that as part of the zone, George?
I don't believe we can actually require it to have twenty percent set aside. But that's part of the density bonus process, right?
Right. So separate and apart, I mean, we could adopt a program that would later require the town to adopt an inclusionary ordinance. And the inclusionary ordinance gives certain benefits for developers. So in exchange for having to have certain affordable units within their project, they might get additional floor area ratio, they might get other like density bonuses, things of that nature. But yes, we would be able to through an inclusionary ordinance.
But that's voluntary, not required.
You could require, so if you adopt an inclusionary ordinance, it would be required to be a minimum twenty percent affordable, but that would apply to all multifamily properties and not just one multifamily property.
All right.
And and we've talked about an inclusionary ordinance, and I I think it's in the housing element, isn't it?
We 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 had it in the earlier version, and then I think when the multifamily was removed, it was removed as well. But I know we have an inclusionary.
I thought this fall, we talked about an inclusionary ordinance where we would require any new development in Atherton to include funds that get set aside into a funded.
Yeah, an inclusionary fee on single-family homes, correct.
That's the, that's the fee component of it, housing impact fee. But not the, it wouldn't require any development to build affordable housing.
It wouldn't require them to build affordable housing, but anyone who does development would have to pay currently and and then then this doesn't currently exist, but it would be a new fee for any development.
Right.
Is that in the housing?
That's what's currently in there now. But what Lisa's talking about is the inclusionary ordinance, which requires the twenty percent affordable units within a multifamily development. That was in the early iterations of the housing element. We removed it when we removed the overlays.
Right. So the inclusionary ordinances, they're they're drafted to tailor each community's need, and we can, through our police powers, tailor them to what the council wishes, but they could state, for example, how many units have to be low, very low. They can state how many have to be moderate. And a lot of times, communities have an in-lu fee alternative to the construction of those units. So in lieu of constructing, for example, twenty low-income units, they would pay the equivalent. The town would take those funds and can either use them to construct its own affordable housing project or pool funds as development occurs and put it towards a low-income housing.
And I would I would agree, if we move in the direction of multifamily zoning, that we should return the inclusionary ordinance to the housing element.
Right.
Yes.
Of the of the properties that we have on the table here, this is not one, the only advantage of this property is that you have an actual builder. That's the only advantage. It's in the middle of the neighborhood. It's a place where there's traffic issues. You're gonna, you're gonna end up having to have a light on the end of Selby and El Camino Real in order to accommodate it. It it's not, if I were to look on a map, that's not the one I would pick. The only reason it's on the table really is because it's somebody who's actually there, willing to build it. If we look at the four properties that we're, we're, we are talking about, I'll express an opinion. I think the putting our own skin in the game is something I feel strongly about. And I do think we should do the Gilmore House. I also think the next one after that for me personally would be El Camino. And to ask your question specifically, where in El Camino, the area in El Camino, to me, that's appealing is from Stock Ridge, where I live, going to Redwood City. Across the street is already, you've got Planned Parenthood, you've got all sorts of development there. So it's, so if you go back to the principles, what we are saying, if you're looking at, all right, we have to develop our city and none of us want to, but we have to. So if we have to develop our city, let's go back to principles. That's on our transportation corridor. There is a bus stop right there, so people would not have to do additional parking. There's already small residents, some of which already enter, have curb cuts onto El Camino. So that little strip, and I think it's about twelve houses, would be one that I would put on the table for us to look at after the Gilmore House. And I would take an approach of trying to get as minimum to meet the requirements as we can get. We're hearing that what we have right now is not gonna fly. So what what is the minimum? Will Gilroy House get us there? What do our experts say? If that won't get us there, then the next one, in my opinion, would be the El Camino for all the reasons we said. It's, it is, it follows development principles of what, how you'd want to develop a city.
Well, I think Oakwood still should fall in there, and it does have access to Woodside Road as well as, you know, it's not that far down Selby. So I think it's, it's a reasonable piece. And and part of our requirement is not just to plan it, but to do it. And so I think that there's a need for us to consider that, too. I mean, we can rezone all the, the whole town if we wanted to, but if no one builds anything, then the, then HCD will come back. So, yes, sorry.
You, I just want to clarify, you said that Oakwood has access to Woodside Road?
Yeah, you can go through that neighborhood in Redwood City. It's not that far.
Oh, to Woodside Road? No, to El Camino.
That's a real traffic problem. In fact, the city, maybe you guys can explain. I I drive that way because I don't, let me just finish.
Yeah, but the issue with with access to to transit is that is implying that the low-income people don't have a car, and so they have to walk somewhere to to where a bus might be going up or down. And Woodside Road also has buses as well.
Right.
And so if they're walking, they're not driving. And so if they're walking, they're not driving. According to what the plan was, and that's why they said we want you to be on transit routes. So you can walk, not drive.
I hear what you're saying, but the point I was making is that that particular neighborhood already, and I don't know the history of this, they already have closed. Part of the streets there to through traffic during the COVID, they had signs, nobody could drive that way because they take a lot of the. Traffic because people don't want to turn left on the end of Stockbridge onto El Camino is extremely dangerous. So what any, so I mean, for example, my kids, when they're learning to drive, I made them go around to the light. So they could turn left at the light, and a lot of people do that, and I suspect that's how the residents were able to get. These ordinances to have their signs that you go there today, you can't go to the left hand side of that circle, it's it's closed. So it is already a traffic issue, so it's not an optimal place to build. And in my view, on the other hand, we got a guy who's saying he's going to build it, and we're getting a lot of pushback that things aren't. So in my view, the only benefit of that one is that we have a guy who wants to build it. But if I were to pick a place, it would not be the place I would pick.
But we also have a guy that wants to build it, who has said he'll he'll build it under his own terms if he has to.
Yeah.
Do that, and personally, I would rather, if we're going to pick something. That we have a way of controlling what it is, the setbacks, et cetera, to try and minimize the impact on the neighborhood. And so, yeah, I mean, we have a choice there. So if we don't have something that's going to get approved, that's what's going to come.
That's true, and that's scary.
He would, he's, but that would be only under a builder's remedy, you know, if he, you know. Plan and and we don't. Rezone or overlay his property, if we get an approved plan with other locations. Then he's left with maybe doing a lot split like an SB nine and a couple of houses, you know, without. And if I were him, that's exactly what I would do. I think that's the highest and the best use for that property is to lot split it and. Build ADUs.
But you have it on your list here, right at the top, number one.
Well, that was because at that time, it just seemed we we were naive. We didn't have all the other.
To be just a little clear on what you're talking about, Councilmember Lewis. Given the town's proposals in the housing element, that property owner would be able to lot split under SB nine. Develop an ADU, a single family home, an ADU, a JADU, and potentially a second ADU. So that is. That's Pearl, that's one, two, three.
Per 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 section.
And then a second one on each, so eight. On each.
One, two, three, yeah.
So that would be what would be allowed under that proposal.
Right, and but that's what's allowed throughout the whole town of Atherton, and we're gonna be. I just see all these little pockets of, you know, ADUs spaced all over Atherton, and I think that in itself. Is going to look worse than. You know, having a section that we upzone for that will. Satisfy the requirements of low and extremely low income housing along transit corridors. So if we don't do that and get that approved, then we, you know, we're just shooting ourselves in the foot. For having an ADU, a JADU, and another ADU, and height limits all set by by four feet. And I, throughout Atherton.
No, but I I I ask, well, how, why do you think that? Very low income housing is going to be built? Let's say you rezone. Wait, let me just finish. Let's say you rezone El Camino where you want to rezone it. Why do you think that's going to result in low income housing?
Well.
How does that work? I run the numbers, I don't get it.
Bob, Bob maybe can answer this because that was his proposal, and he was talking about the city actually purchasing the land. Now, that's an interesting, I I'm not going to pretend that I even understand what's involved in that. But he proposed it, he's he's runs our financials for the city, so he seemed to have a reasonable. Idea of how that works.
It is a very creative idea, and it would be great if we could do something like that because then we could control it. However, there are programs like Heart, you know, throughout San Mateo County. And hip housing and low income. Developers that do that, and they can buy.
Well, Menlo Park, the same as that's what Menlo School did. They decided they just were going to buy because it was too expensive, so they went over to Menlo's Benlow Menlo Park to get the.
Well, we can do a bond.
I believe that we go ahead and we, you know, we buy the land, first off, we have other needs. We've already done a five year plan, spend every penny that we've got. All right, and we've been on a, we've been on a diet with what we've been doing to build this location. We still haven't paid it off. We also haven't paid off the Atherton Channel. So we have, how much liability we taking onboard? Plus, we still have approximately fifteen or sixteen million dollar pension obligation. So, you know, are we just going to load it up for debt? Because, you know, over in a few years, some of us will be off the council and be somebody else's problem. No.
It's a good point.
Anyway, it was a good idea, Bob.
He does have his hand up again, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other comments?
He wants to answer because we were talking about his proposal, so let's.
Okay, yeah, Bob, go ahead.
Bill, your your comments are certainly the the. The type of comments I would expect from our most fiscally prudent council member. However, I I believe that for. Relatively affordable amount of money, the city could acquire two properties in the area I'm talking about. And we could lease that property to a low income housing provider, and we could get the project done in the time, in the eight year cycle. With with an affordable debt level. And we borrowed roughly seven and a half million dollars to to to. Build the room you're sitting in. And we were going to pay it back in five years, and it's two percent money, so instead we paid down five million dollars of our pension debt. I believe there's sources of funds. Again, this is all part of the vetting that I believe needs to be done. I I I don't, I'm not saying everything is black and white, and I know it. But I think there are sources of funds that are will be on the same order of magnitude in terms of cost. Two percent, let's say, to to build affordable housing. And that's what I'm talking about building. The town would own the properties. It would take roughly eight, no more than an eight million dollar investment. And then we'd lease the property, we'd get some income to help defray the cost, but we won't defray all the costs. It's going to be a use of city funds to do this housing element in a way that is the least. Damaging to the community. You've you've heard a lot of the people say, well, let's let's do a parcel tax so we can pay for our legal funds, and we'll sue the state, or we'll do this, or we'll do that. This is the practical way to do it. It's an affordable way. And if we, and I believe it it actually. You know, it'll be deed restricted, and it will produce lower income housing. I I think it's very doable for for the richest zip code in the United States.
That gets eight cents per property tax dollar.
Well, I I love that approach, and I'm wondering if we took the approach that we're talking about, applied it to the Gilmore House. Have we made it? Is that enough? You're just saying no. So so just doing what we were talking about right here of of leasing the land that we have, that we already own. So there's no investment, we're not going in debt. We give it to a low income developer, and they build six units, but we count it as. Can you explain how that works and would that work?
So we could, you could rezone that section of the Gilmore House of the park for twenty units per acre, but it is point nine seven. Acres of space, so twenty is the most you would get, but that's still not an appreciable amount. For the target we need for the very low and the low.
So we still need on top of that.
Yes.
I have some comments and questions. I think the inclusionary zoning ordinance. Sounds like we need to adopt it because we are doing multifamily on the school properties, and we're counting the school properties as part, a good part of our low income housing. So I'm wondering if we need that regardless to ensure that the school hits those numbers in our plan. Two, I would like to challenge the notion that the cost of our land will be a significant. Barrier for builder's remedy, because with builder's remedy, there are no rules about density. And housing gets pretty cheap to build when at very high density levels where land will not be a problem. And so I would love to not avoid builder's remedy, especially because we could potentially see a high rise. In Atherton because we have no rules against it, because financially, that's where the cost of land becomes. A lot easier to cover, so I just want to put that out there as something we should be considering. And then also, when it comes to transit corridors, correct me if I'm wrong, I think bike lanes count as access to transit. And so that's another factor to me that makes twenty three oakwood interesting because they're on the Peninsula Bike Corridor. So they have a dedicated bike path that makes it less of a barrier for cars. I think I've driven through it, and I remember I saw signs about it, so I'm sorry, I know this is very hard, but I think that. You know, there's there's infrastructure there that does support more density. Thanks to our neighbors in Redwood City, but it it does get the transit part side of it is different there.
Can we go to the level of actually understanding numbers? So if we went to the low hanging fruit of the Gilmore House, and then we went down to, then the next two in line seem to be. The El Camino or Oakwood. Where do we, can we talk about how many numbers? Like, how many of these do we need to put in? We have four on the table. How many do we need to put in? But we're counting, we have a very good plan of play, so it's not like we have nothing. We're not starting from zero. So but what we're hearing from our experts is what we have is not enough. So if we take the approach of we just. Get enough so that we have enough that the experts are saying we're not gonna, that we're going to comply, that's kind of where I'd like to see us go.
Well, regarding the ADUs. The response from HCD was. How many are actually being rented today and what are the income levels? And and, you know, so we would need to have that data. We don't have it today. Hopefully, we can get it, and people would be willing to give us that information. But they were skeptical of the numbers for ADUs. Plus, they claimed that because it was an ADU, if if we're not going through a third party, which we are intending to do. That. The owner had the right to say, I'll rent to you, but I won't rent to her. And that's that's discriminatory. And so they wanted, you know, they they questioned that and said, you know, ADUs, you know, don't count because. For that reason, they they discounted them, and so we need to, we need to convince them that what we're going to propose is is. Is passable in their minds, not in our minds.
So the the issue on the rentals and reporting and all that, that helps us down the line as we report. Our compliance with producing those sorts of units, and if they come from ADUs, that's that's great. But what HCD, I think their main thrust is we are relying on ADUs for. Most of the very low and the low income category, and that's where there's the disconnect between whether those are exclusionary. Whereas multifamily would not be.
Yeah, I think we're hearing pretty loud that we need to have multifamily. And we don't have that, so that's what we're here, just to bring it back up of to what, why we're here. Is we're figuring how to get that in the most powerful way and be compliant.
So I, we heard earlier in the meeting. From our housing consultant Nazim, who said that. The first thing that we need to change in this plan is multifamily zoning, okay? So that's loud and clear. And then she talked about the FFHA, the. Family Fair Housing Act programming and the analysis of SB nines. So that needs to be tweaked, and they could have language prepared for us to review on that. And then. How are we, and what is missing in our current plan is how we are going to. Address the extremely low income and people with disabilities. In our housing element, you know, we have our our element is silent. That's what I understood her to say, that it's silent in in that regard. And then. And how availability of. Of of financing. So I think that if we could ask our consultants to come back to us. With how they would tweak our existing plan. So that it is, it shows that we are trying to address these issues that are glaringly absent from our plan. And from their perspective, that would help us. Submit a plan to HCD that shows that we are really trying to work towards. Solving the problems.
With all due respect, there is no time. We have to have, you have to have this before you for next week. That agenda packet comes out Friday. So, yes, we could do some narrative and add the availability of financing and all those sorts of things. But we need the council this evening to identify where exactly you want us to include multifamily.
Can I ask a question, actually for you, Lisa? If we were to build something on, let's just say we're going to build multifamily housing, we're going to promote it. Is there funding to do something specifically for handicap or for elderly? But then if we do it specifically for handicap or elderly, then it's exclusionary. So I'm, there's a little bit of circular thinking there, but if we could get all of our requirements in one unit. So let's say we had one development that the city, however we raised the money to do it, we got one place that we agreed on, and we're going to build it here. Could it be specifically for handicap or elderly, so we check off another requirement?
I was wondering if the city attorney wanted to answer that as far as the restricting it for elderly or handicap, but I know there's programs absolutely to support. Accessible housing in that sense, and I believe there's a requirement through the ADA that there be a certain number of units that would be accessible. So if you build new multifamily housing, that's the best opportunity to include those accessible units as well as any larger family units. And so that's basically why that's missing right now is because we just don't have any place to accommodate those units. And so if you were to rezone several properties for multifamily, then yes, that's where the accessible units could be included.
In Portola Valley, they're building kind of a special needs school. And I'm wondering whether or not they're doing that in part to hit, check off multiple, you know, multiple requirements in one. Development, so I guess I'm trying to understand if that's a strategy we could take, and if there might be more because of that. There might be other sources of state funding for that development too that we might be able to tap. No.
Well, it's it's going to be challenging to find funding for very small projects. And it's going to be challenging to find affordable housing nonprofit developers for small projects. In other communities, we're finding it very difficult to find anybody willing to build less than twenty units. They they need larger developments to make the financing work and and for their management as well.
You know, it's funny is that you would think that, but I went to one of the, they had a conference in downtown Redwood City. About building nonprofit housing, and since I know nothing about it, I attended. And one of the things they did say was that there was funding for smaller units, and I thought that is being encouraging for the kind of stuff. Because anything we build is not going to be big, so I thought it was, it was counterintuitive, but that there was at least one person gave a whole talk about that. So, I don't know.
I just want to. Hey, piggyback on to that. You would think that with the multifamily that's being proposed to be developed on the school properties. That there would be units for people with disabilities to access, right, in those types of environments.
That's correct, but it gets back to kind of available to the general public.
Available to the general public.
So all of the other issues that Mazenie talked about.
Right.
Disability housing, very low, extremely. Disability housing, very low, extremely low, et cetera. If we had multifamily designation, we could address those within the housing element. What we really need the council to do is focus on where we want that multifamily. And if you don't, just tell staff, submit it as it is, but there are risks with that.
Okay, can we get started and talk about the Gilmore House? Cause I think that's our property, that seems like people have feelings about that, that maybe we could give direction to staff on Gilmore House. I can start. Um, I think it seems like there might be a big barrier, given the deed restrictions of the park. That makes me nervous, but I think it's worth trying. So I'm in favor of having the Gilmore House as part of our housing element.
I'm absolutely in favor. I think that that's, shows good faith, it shows that we have skin in the game and we're taking seriously what the obligation is that's on our plate. And I'll I'll also say, I think that it can be done in such a way that it won't interfere with the park. Cause the property, just in case anyone doesn't know, it's not in the park. It's kind of on the edge of the park and it's already not used for park property. So it's not, we're not taking swing sets out. This is an area that's already not, not you, it's used for housing already.
So the only thing that I would approve with regards to the Gilmore House, if I decide to approve it, you know, you know, vote for it, would be staff housing. And so um, it'd only be a few units and it would cover, you know, Atherton staff housing, which, you know, somebody could say, well, that's exclusionary as well. Um, and uh, I mean, you could put it in at six, you know, twenty units per acre, but but you know, I don't think, I don't, I I can't see putting twenty units there. And so um, we, I would have to have the assurance that whatever the town decides to do with that location, it wouldn't be twenty. It'd be like six max. And that's an if. So there's two people saying definitely.
But I think that my understanding of the housing element is that we would zone and then the town would that we own the property, so we would get to take our time figuring out. You know, notifying the neighbors and figuring that all out over the course of a few years, right?
Three years if we comply.
If we if we put it in the housing element, we need to accomplish it with.
Right, I mean, it hasn't been built, I'm more just, it wouldn't like snap our fingers and leave housing.
No, and and as, if you put it in at twenty units per acre, the council has the control over what actually happens there.
One of the other things is just sidebar, when at that same conference, they were talking about these kinds of things that were built on public land. And one of the things they often do is require whoever the, so we lease it back for seventy-five years to these low income housing people that will build the thing. We can put all sorts of criteria on it, but they often add something of benefit to the public as part of that deal. So in the case of some of the ones they were showing, there was one where they add a public swimming pool, they added um, an art gallery. You know, so they can, we can, they can sweeten the deal by doing stuff to make our part of funding for our park. Pickleball, for example.
Oh, I would, I would, let's not get into that.
And usually there's a nexus to the development for those sorts of things, but.
You know, uh. There's a lot of history about a public swimming pool in the park.
Yeah, exactly.
I think she was just using.
I was using as an example.
And the minute she said it, I said.
That was the one they showed, that was the one they showed.
Um, I have big reservations about um, putting the park in our um, especially at twenty units an acre. Um, and I, you know, I really try to wrap my head around, you know, what it would look like and who would, we rented to it. Rent it to and um, without being exclusionary. And you know, I think that you just don't want to go there. You don't want to build something and then just say, well, the restrictions, the restrictions. Uh, you know, who gets to come and live there? And so I would prefer that what is existing is a purposeful uh, use of it at this time. So I'm gonna vote against that. I think we should uh, include twenty-three Oakwood in in the um, in in this plan. And I think we should include uh, um, the um, a stretch of uh, El Camino uh, starting at the Redwood City border and going down, as we've discussed, as uh, the first step. And um, I think that is a reasonable approach. I think it um, is um, yeah, close to transit, you know? And it meets a lot of, it checks off a lot of boxes.
So Rick, do you have any comments?
Well, there's clearly a need for affordable housing. And if we included um, the property in the park at twenty-three units an acre, I don't know how many that units that is, given the uh, size of that piece of property. It's really not a separated piece of property, it's one twenty-two acre property. But um, but the opinion from legal counsel is that if that house were replaced by townhouses, a few townhouses, it would be incidental. And the risk, the real issue is that the deed that granted the park to the town includes a reversionary clause, that if the park is used for housing, that it will go to Stanford University. And um, and that obviously hasn't occurred with the one house that was moved there at about the time we got the park. Um, so, you know, there's, there's some incidental use of that house uh, or townhouses in place of that house that um, were advised would not threaten uh, losing the park. But I don't think that our residents want to take the risk of losing the park. Uh, so uh, while I see a benefit of zoning it for twenty units an acre in terms of uh, what our needs are with this housing element, I I think there's, there's a real risk uh, which makes me not want to do that. And and I also think that the residents that use the park, which, you know, are not a majority of our residents, but are a good number of residents. You know, it it's different when your park has people that live in it versus when it doesn't. So I, some incidental use, we we've considered using the the main house as housing for police officers uh, when when we were looking at that. We do have someone that lives in the Gilmore House right now. So it's not, I I don't really want to uh, push that family out. Um, but I I think it's a difficult issue. And uh, Park and Rick hasn't even commented on it, but I'm sure they would not be supportive of putting, or I think they wouldn't be supportive of putting housing there. But it hasn't come before them, so I don't know.
And what do you think about, Elizabeth also mentioned uh, Oakwood. What do you, what's your comments on Oakwood?
I mean, I I I've had a lot of comments about Oakwood over the last year. I I feel very committed to what we have said to the Wiley family from the beginning, which was that, you know, we didn't want to see it become a large townhouse development. I recognize there's a very genuine threat that that property is likely to be subject to a builder's remedy. Um, I recognize that.
Only if we can't get an approved plan. So if we, you know.
I I personally don't think that HCD is gonna approve anything that we submit. So I don't think there's a possibility of getting an approved plan. I I just don't think they're gonna approve it.
What about El Camino?
El Camino, yeah, what's your opinion on El Camino?
Well, I I I don't think the town has the funds to buy property and proceed with some kind of a elaborate town acquiring property to build a very few number of affordable housing units. That doesn't make any sense to me.
It doesn't have to be that way. It, I mean, it's not that way or no way. I mean, you can.
I don't disagree with the idea that if if Atherton is going to have um, multifamily housing, that it makes more sense on El Camino Real than anywhere else. Because that's a busy street.
Yeah, I think that's the only question on the table at this point.
Yeah, there's a lot of development along along El Camino and Menlo, Menlo Park. So there's no reason to not, and I think, like you said, there's a demand for people who want to live in Atherton who can't afford it.
Well, this is why we, we justified, and I feel like we did properly and justified uh, to authorize a four-story apartment building on El Camino at Menlo College. It's right across the street from Forest Park, which is a four-story apartment building. So that makes sense. And and I don't, I I don't disagree with what you said, Diana, about Oakwood is in the middle of a residential section. It's really different than El Camino.
Yeah.
I mean, the park is also in a very residential section and
Yeah.
It's on Watkins Road, which, you know, doesn't have any sidewalks, just like the Oakwood.
What if, why don't we go around and hear what people think about particularly El Camino and that's? Yeah, and I agree with you, but.
Well, I would, uh, if I, if, you know, first off, we have to make some decision. And I understand that perhaps they are, HCD may reject it again, but at least we're making a good faith effort and then we would have more time, you know, and they would want to work with us maybe uh, with that. Personally, I think that one of our best opportunities is twenty-three Oakwood with uh, whatever clauses we want to put in to guarantee that we're going to get something uh, that helps meet our need. Um, I, I wouldn't do that whole stretch of El Camino that you have highlighted here.
No, twelve houses.
That's just the R one B zone.
Stockbridge, Stockbridge to uh, you know, to the, to the edge is a good idea as well. So those two areas are are mine. Um, if we had to do something at uh, the Gilmore House, uh, my thoughts would be, it has to be, you know, a low number that would fit on that piece of property and it would be for staff. Because there has been a need expressed by some staff. And in the past, we had officers, you know, living in the Gilmore House before we put, before the chief moved in there, um, and even a little bit afterwards. And so um, I think that there still is a need for staff housing here. And I think that that's, meanwhile, we need to pursue the, the activities over at the college. Um, so those are my, my ideas. I don't think that the HCD would approve just the college, which I, we were hoping that they would. Um, cause they claim it's exclusionary again. So I think we need to make a good faith effort. Else we'll be wrestling with this for the better part of the year, in one way or the other.
So, so if I could just narrow this down quickly, the Gilmore House does not seem like it has consensus. So that one's off as a lower priority. The.
Had three people in favor, Bill's slightly in favor.
There were two uh, two against, two in favor and one, I'm not so sure.
Yeah. Yeah. Was two, two, and then Bill was the.
Positive maybe.
Yeah, I don't want to see twenty units there. Yeah. Well, as I said, if it was a lower number, I would be agreeable to it.
But you, you also said that it would only be tar, you know, for staff only.
Yeah, right.
And that's, so I don't think, where does that um, help us meet?
It's the same as the school, school numbers.
Right, we could, we could do it for workforce housing, but I don't think we could.
Okay, we can say workforce housing, if if it meant a teacher or if it meant a police officer from Menlo Park, that'd be okay.
Right, but, and we would zone it at twenty units per acre, but we control what actually gets developed on that particular section.
Yes. And could we zone our own property as fully low income? Cause I'm concerned some of our ADU low income allocation will be questioned by HCD. So I'm wondering if we could pad that number by zoning our property. Right, the Gilmore House.
Right.
As exclusively low income. Is that?
Control what happens there.
Can't do that.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't need to be specified in the zoning. I think the housing element would say that's a program the town is pursuing, is to have a hundred percent affordable housing there. And since it's town-controlled, it it's more likely to go in that direction. Um, the only issue is if if you designated it twenty units an acre and you build six, then we may need to find other sites later. But if your ADU numbers are not where you want them to be.
Get agreement.
Oakwood and El Camino.
Yeah, Oakwood and, oh, Oakwood and El Camino to me are the best choice.
That's, that's.
Can we do just El Camino? Is that enough?
No, yeah, I mean, you keep whittling it down. No, that's not gonna be enough.
Okay.
Okay? They were, they've been pretty clear with us. If you look at the numbers that George put up, they don't like our numbers.
So for El Camino, would we be talking a townhouse overlay or zoning?
Zoning.
Rezoning.
Rezoning to R one B. I mean, our.
To twenty units per acre.
Twenty. Okay.
Okay, so if we rezoned that, George, I'm gonna ask you to do ma, fast math. So that area, if we rezoned all of that to twenty.
No, no, not all the way there.
It's twelve houses.
Stockbridge is twelve houses.
There's seventeen lots.
Seventeen. Can you estimate where that, what those numbers would be?
Well, they're not all exactly the same size.
Right, I'm just.
And so I don't know that you can.
Yeah.
You're right, do that.
Did you?
I've heard this before.
Yeah.
I think we need to rezone.
But, I mean, we.
Odell.
Re- rezoning them at twenty units per acre doesn't mean that they're all gonna actually develop, so.
Yeah.
What, twenty times seventeen is what we'd be able to count in our housing element as affordable? But we wouldn't realistically be able to do that over the next eight years. So I don't think we'd put that entire number in there. So, but it would satisfy a huge chunk of our very low and low if it were twenty units per acre.
Right, but I I think they're less than an acre each of the properties. And so we would, we we did a table before that showed what the development potential is. And I think we could assume, you know, maybe three of them would be built in the next eight years or something, right?
Diana, that's, those are the ones that we uh, initially is our first, our first choice. I just want to draw people's attention to see where it says PFS down on Almond Draw. And all of that right there, the the tan area across the street from it, put your cursor over. Yeah. That's pretty high density. Those are very, very, very small lots. That, that development has never detracted or caused other Atherton properties to devalue in price. I just want to bring that up because that could be along Atherton Avenue in one seventy, Atherton Avenue, that four acre. And nobody in that area would have a devaluation of their property.
Through the mayor, uh, our consultant Diane online has a comment.
Thank you. Um, just want to remind people that any site that's less than half an acre cannot be counted towards your affordability requirements unless they're aggregated into a larger development site. So you would, you would be required to explain how um, those sites would be aggregated either through a lot consolidation program or some other mechanism to allow sites that are less than a half an acre to be uh, aggregated for affordable. Um, so it, depending upon the size of these sites along El Camino, my guess is that you would have to have a program here to incentivize lot consolidation.
They are all less than half an acre.
Yeah, you you can't count them individually. You will not be able to count them individually. You would like to have, you would have to have them aggregated in some way.
The the largest are one eighty-two and one ninety. And I think we were looking at those the other day and one of those was point three two.
Yeah, none of those individually could accommodate affordable housing. So they, you would have to have a program to.
Smaller lots.
Yeah, you'd have to have a program that would allow for or incentivize consolidation.
Diana, what kind of program is that? Is that, I mean, do? Diana, what kind of program is that? Is that, I mean, do we encourage it via zoning ordinance or some other methodology?
It'd be probably for this kind of thing, it, it depict, because, you know, if. I'll tell you about another jurisdiction or sort of a typical jurisdiction. There are five lots, three of them are owned by one person or one entity and two of them are two other people. The, the jurisdiction would have a program to incentivize lot consolidation through removing fees. Through, um, providing funding, uh, outreach to owners. It's, and working with a developer to actually do the consolidation.
So that's, so that's an administrative program that we could incorporate into the housing element.
Exactly, it's not enough to just say, here are these sites, we can, you know, they can be consolidated. The state isn't really gonna wanna see what you actually have as a program to help facilitate the consolidation.
Right, so, but we could add that as a policy within the housing element. We would create such a program. So if those, if El Camino was included, from where to where? From Stockbridge to the end of Sabalo?
Yes.
That's the only sections of El Camino on the western side that front, uh, county or Redwood City or.
When you go and physically look at it, the Stockbridge going the other way aesthetically looks like it. But if you were to be practical and say, we're gonna do everything that's across the street from Commercial, then you would take it farther. So it depends on what our approach is, but when you actually drive it from Stock, Stockbridge to the left, all of that does fee. It's already close to density. It's a hard call.
Right.
Well, from Stock, yeah, from Stockbridge over, many of those homes are rental homes already. And, and. That's why, you know, I've always said if we do that, it's, you know, Stockbridge on. In fact, just Stockbridge between that and Selby is, is, there's a lot of rental properties. So.
Okay, is there general support to add Stockbridge to Redwood City border? Twenty units per acre, rezone, develop a program to encourage lot consolidation?
I agree, but can we ask one question to everyone here? If you're going with this, would you go to the, would you make the argument that you're doing across from Commercial and take it? Those one, two, three properties? In practicality, that one on Nora right there is a brand new house just being built, so. That's not gonna happen, and that feels very different from.
Exactly.
The other way.
And that's why we did, that's why we did.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's perend on our report.
But, but the other part is, you know, the, um. The ones that are, that abut Gresham. See, there's a break there between that area and the neighbors, okay? Uh, on, on, uh, Selby to Redwood City, they abut. Fairly large properties, and so, you know, maybe we should consider taking that, those, what, five?
I'm not following you, Mayor.
You're saying stop it at Selby instead of going to the Redwood City border?
Yeah, right. And the reason for that is that they don't have the separation that, that. The properties that abut, uh, Gresham have.
I think one of the things we can do, though, to try to separate this a little bit is to allow a, a higher fences there. And to try to encourage getting permission to get the cut, the curb cuts so that it enters. Even if right now it doesn't enter that way, I mean, what can we do to encourage it to be a little separate? You know what I'm saying? So we can, we can have special screening, we can raise the, the height of the fences behind it.
Yeah, those would be the development standards as part of the.
Yeah, so we, we could do everything we can within our power to make it feel separate. Cause it is already a commercial streets all the way through. And if you look at the, the ones that are toward El Camino, it's even, I mean, closer to Redwood City, you're already in Redwood City there.
It would for the curb cut, yes.
Is the mayor's, is the, it is, uh, one of the council members speaking because I can't hear him.
Yeah, it was just a question about whether a curb cut from the properties would require approval by Caltrans to a state highway. The answer was yes. So, uh, all the way to Selby or all the way to Redwood City?
My vote would be Redwood City.
I would vote that way too.
I think this would be a great place for Den City. It's right across the street from a grocery store, a gas station. Hopefully, El Camino will develop bike lanes there, so, you know, it will have a lot of resources to support Den City there.
All the way to Selby or to Redwood City?
Redwood City.
And why, why would you not do this as an overlay? Why would you do it as hard zoning?
The difference between overlay and zoning, uh, rezoning.
I understand the difference. I'm asking why you don't, not doing it as an overlay. In the housing element, my understanding is we get the same credit irregardless.
It's, uh, I, I, I think there was a concern that HCD would not give as much weight to an overlay. That it would actually happen versus, uh, rezone where, yeah, it stands a better chance to happen.
In several other jurisdictions that I've worked with, uh, HCD said, uh, it didn't feel like a real commitment from a jurisdiction. If there was an overlay zone, they want to see, um, the underlying zoning. And last in perpetuity, or at least until the next time something gets upzoned.
And then, uh, twenty-three Oakwood? Where do we leave that one?
I'm still in favor of it. If you look at the map, it's walking distance to a bus stop that's on El Camino. You don't even have to walk through Redwood City to Woodside Road. It's not that far away as it was implied. By some.
It seems like a long way to Woodside Road. But you could go, go wood, to Oakwood, to El Camino.
But it's five or six properties.
Yeah.
No, no, to El Camino.
Yeah.
Okay, this is not, this is not a group discussion, okay? Thank you.
I think you, I think you meant.
On our side. Yeah, El Camino.
Woodside.
To El Camino, where there's a bus stop right out there.
I, I, I agree with you on that, Mayor. Yes, I do.
But most of it is a traffic issue. There is a traffic issue there. And it's witnessed by the fact that they already have all these things in place right there. But when we originally looked at this and why I made Elizabeth and I, one of our original lists is we were taking the premise of being on. Close to density. It is close to density and it is on the edge of town. But it's not on a major transportation corridor, so the El Camino one is way better.
Well, it's, it's a believable developables.
And it's real. Yeah, we have a developer and.
That, that's ways for a lot. Way, uh, HCD to think that it's really.
Can I ask a, a planning question with respect to the inclusionary ordinance? If the council, uh, approved an upzone of twenty-three Oakwood to ten or fifteen units per acre as opposed to twenty. We adopted the inclusionary ordinance, would it still apply to ten to fifteen units?
The ordinance would need to specify how many units, yes.
But it would apply in that case, even if it was a lower density to address some of the concerns of the neighbor.
HCD is just not gonna accept it as a affordable housing site, correct?
Right.
But yes, you could impose an inclusionary requirement.
So you can have a lower density and then say there's an inclusionary requirement if you wanna build it.
That is correct. Well, period, if you wanna build it all.
Let me ask you a question. If, if there is an inclusionary ordinance at a lower density than twenty an acre. Will they count that twenty percent if the, so assuming it's a twenty percent inclusionary ordinance? Will they count that as very low and low?
I think Diana wants to answer that.
The answer is no.
Right.
This underlying zoning has to allow for, uh, affordable housing. They will not, because of the way state law is now, if you have an inclusionary ordinance, you have to provide. Opportunities to developers not to comply, not to provide the units that they can pay money. Instead of providing the units. So it becomes in a technicality, but meaning in terms of the, uh, providing units, it's optional. And so the rule now is you cannot count, uh, against arena allocation potential inclusionary units. Period.
So, so we would, if we did it at twenty units per acre, we could count them. If we do it at ten to fifteen, even with the inclusionary ordinance, we could not count them.
That's correct.
They would count as above moderate or moderate, but.
I mean, I, I don't support any of it, but I think that it would be a mistake for the council to approve any, uh, upzoning. Whether it's overlay or, um, actual zoning unless there's a requirement. Twenty percent of it would be affordable. I, I, I don't understand why anybody would do that.
We could, we could still do that, but we just couldn't put it in our table. Yeah.
But I, I'd rather control. How it's built and the, and the requirements that the town would wanna have. As opposed to be having them dictated to us. And I think that that's, that allows us, the same as when we were talking about. Other areas in town, you know, if, if we, at that time, we would have an overlay or we would rezone. Then we would have the ordinances rewritten to address the needs of the neighbors. And, uh, if it's a builder's remedy, then there's, you know, there's nothing that we can do. Plus, you know, I understand your comments, Rick, that, that, uh. HCD probably would approve this, but. Um, I think we need to make a good faith effort to at least, you know, keep them from. Going ballistic. And, and if we don't do that, then, then they don't like what we've got. We're essentially, with what we have today, we're sending back the same thing that we sent to them before that they rejected. Except for we've addressed some things. Yeah, so. So, anyway.
Can I ask a question about twenty-three Oakwood? Uh, we're hearing a lot about the impact on traffic. So is, if we zone it, are there things that we could do to support that community to mitigate the impact?
Sure, so at this stage, you're just looking at, do you wanna, you know, consider that rezoning in the future, and that would be within a year. And then when the actual project comes in with the rezoning, we'd need to do, um, an environmental analysis that would include a traffic study. Um, this project, given its proximity to El Camino Real and Transit, may be exempt from what's called the vehicle miles traveled. Which is the new standard, um, but you can look at safety and different circulation, and you could require the developer to implement some changes.
Or at least contribute to changes.
Plus, it would be a project, so it would be subject to CEQA, wouldn't it?
That's correct, but under CEQA, the issue on traffic is vehicle miles traveled and not level of service. So it's, it's, the analysis has changed a bit.
So they, they could theoretically be required to contribute to signalization at Selby and El Camino Real.
And is that something we would decide as council or is that?
It's part of an environmental review.
It would need to, um, be warranted and, you know, through the analysis, right? It would, there would need to be the nexus that this project causes an impact that needs to be mitigated.
A traffic signal at El Camino, I think, was in the neighborhood of a million dollars or so. Uh, so they probably wouldn't pay for the entirety of it, but they might.
Okay, that sounds.
Who knows?
Well, at the end of Selby, if you put a traffic signal there, obviously, east Selby, being part of the county. They would have to pay for half of it, right?
Every, uh, everybody would pay their fair share.
On the other path, it's a very complicated intersection.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Thing, and they're not a popular idea.
So include, not include twenty units per acre, less per acre?
I would include it, so that puts, I think, three of us.
Included that twenty units per acre or?
I'd say twenty.
Twenty, okay. Councilmember Hawk, Vice Mayor?
Rick? I, Rick?
I'm sorry.
What, what do you? What do you?
Okay, okay, this is not public comment, Stephanie, please, okay? Somebody, somebody has to make a decision, and this, this five people up here that have to make the decision. Everybody who's said, everybody who we've talked to has said, yeah, I support it, but anywhere but here, okay? That is our property. Now, we're not gonna have any more public comment, please. Thank you.
So I have one.
I think we should be very clear about. I think we should be very clear about what we're approving and have a vote on every property. Exactly what is happening on that property.
I agree.
So it's clear.
Right, start with El Camino, though.
It's the one.
Well, what?
I think we already did that one.
What I have so far is from Stockbridge to the town border, rezoning at twenty units per acre. And the town adopts an inclusionary ordinance as well as incentivized program to encourage consolidation of parcels.
Right.
Wanna go person by person, Mr. Mayor?
Just have a roll call.
This roll call is for twenty-three Oakwood?
No, this is for El Camino.
El Camino, okay. Councilmember Holland. Councilmember DeGolia. Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hawkins-Manuelian.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGolia.
Yes.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, Mayor Widmer. Still January.
Well, you've got three votes already, right?
I have three, I have three and three yes, one no.
Yeah, so I'll stay.
Oh, come on.
Sorry, say that again, sir.
Okay, I'll vote for it. How about that?
I think that's man enough.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and then, uh, the Gilmore House, I understood, is not on the table, but twenty-three Oakwood, twenty units per acre. Same inclusionary ordinance requirement or something less than that, same inclusionary ordinance requirement.
You know, we've spoken with the neighbors, not only Stephanie and Tom, but also the Wiley's.
Yeah.
And I think that we've had a lot of discussion about having, um, a lesser density. And so, um, I prefer to go with a lesser density there and, um. I don't know what, what, you mentioned fifteen or sixteen.
Fifteen, you could set it whatever you'd like.
Fifteen.
This is still council income then?
No, we, we, I mean, we can't count it with the twenty as guaranteed affordable housing, uh, in the, in the table. We would count it as above moderate or moderate.
But we don't need that, is that correct? What we're getting at here is.
We do, we do not. However, if it is subject to the inclusionary ordinance and the developer actually develops it at the higher density. They are required to provide affordable units, and if they are actually developed, they actually occur.
Yeah, they do.
There's another meeting in here at six thirty, Mark and Rex.
It's noticed here.
Good, so, um. I think, you know, fifteen or sixteen per acre is max is what I would do. I mean, we spoke with the Wiley's about ten to twelve. You know, so a few more, and I, I'd rather require. What we want to have built there than have the Aradas just build what the hell they want. Sorry.
So was that fifteen?
Fifteen, let's go with fifteen.
Fifteen means about one point six, I think, right? One point five two, one point five two, so that means twenty-four units.
Yeah.
Sorry, I couldn't, I can't hear that. I don't know if somebody doesn't have their microphone on.
The, the last time we approved it was in May.
Yeah.
Was it ten units an acre?
I'm, I'm okay with going with ten, I just.
And if you did it at ten and required twenty percent inclusionary, I think is the way we call it, right? So twenty percent would have to be affordable.
You would not be able to count it in your inventory.
Right, but if it was actually developed.
I mean, we're not a pass HCD anyway, right? So.
But if it's not gonna be included, why are we doing it? I'm confused.
Because he's going to build anyway.
At twenty, at twenty, you can count.
He will build anyway.
Below twenty, you can't.
Got it.
Okay.
If we go below, then, I mean.
Unless we get an approved plan, then he can only do a lot split and do as much as eight.
All right, I'm, I'm okay with going with twenty.
Twenty units per acre?
Me with us being very restrictive with our ordinances.
Okay, uh, wanna do a roll call on that one or?
Yeah, sure.
Twenty-three Oakwood, twenty units per acre.
Councilmember Holland.
Yes.
Tagolia.
No.
Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
I this is the hardest one. Um, can I abstain? Be a was. All right, I'm gonna vote for it.
I'm voting for it. So that's on. Somehow we've got two.
I would agree to it if you do it at ten units an acre. That's what we said to the Wiley's. But if you do it at twenty an acre, I think it's totally disruptive.
Take a roll call at, at ten an acre.
Yeah.
Well, what, what I see is the benefit at ten units per acre to answer the, the vice mayor's query about why is one, it controls whatever development could happen there.
Okay.
Uh, it does show HCD that we do have multifamily zoning of multi varieties. We've got ten units per acre here. We got twenty units per acre over on El Camino. And if he actually does develop the property with the inclusionary ordinance, those units we do get to count.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That sounds, that sounds more fair.
Vote to that. The ten.
So let me just clarify.
Yeah.
That with this inclusionary provision, the way you're, you've, you talked about it, that it would require twenty percent to be affordable.
If that's what's ultimately adopted, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what we're adopting.
Yeah.
All right, ten units, Nick.
So everybody supports ten units per acre?
Okay, and that's what we agreed with you, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That enough to get us there? Are we done?
Uh, that is a huge step forward.
Okay.
I don't know what HCD is gonna say, but that's a huge step forward. That's, that's a lot of hard work.
On the ADU front, are you guys clear on all the policy changes that we need to make to support ADUs? Or do you need clarity on the?
No, I think we, we've got all those. Yeah, those, those have been covered.
And that inclusionary fund.
Yeah, the housing impact fee.
Very well articulated.
Yeah, there's the housing impact fee and now the inclusionary ordinance.
And I'm still concerned, and I think that our consultants could by next week, when we meet again, um, give us some language how to address uh, the FF HA programming analysis and um, the extremely low income and peoples with disabilities. And even, just even if we have language that includes uh, that with the uh, college uh, and school developments, I think that that we need to put that in there because it's glaringly uh, absent from the plan.
Yeah, we'll make sure it includes those things. And, and we'll also start to put a little pressure on Menno College to get that letter.
Let, let me just uh, back that up because uh, what you were responding to was the comment
From.
from our consultant.
Yes, the consultant.
And I, I felt concerned about that too. Uh, but I thought there was new language the good city had added about disabilities and about that whole focus. So maybe what we can ask, cause there's another meeting right now, is that they communicate.
Yes, we'll make sure that there's clarity.
Get that feedback because there's probably some narrative that could be added that would strengthen it.
I mean, yeah.
And uh, tomorrow, we will send out letters to all of the residents on El Camino Real that are affected by this, so five hundred foot radius as well as twenty-three Oakwood, five hundred foot radius as well.
So, I, yeah, I voted against this El Camino thing because this is the same thing that happened before. We've got all these residents live on the streets where these things will be and they don't have any idea.
Can you also communicate with Redwood City about the twenty-three Oakwood?
Yeah, they're on the notice list. So we'll get, make sure they get a copy of that.
All right, um, so uh, the chief wants to make a comment. Do it real quick, come on.
So we, we kicked off our recognition of the centennial year January first. And we've done it with a specially designed badge that the officers have been wearing.
Not, uh, not able to hear the commenter.
Diana, we've concluded the discussion on the housing element. Thank you.
Okay, never mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diana. Thanks, Nazim. Just real quickly for you, in celebration of support of our centennial year, the officers are wearing a specially designed badge throughout the year. We've developed a new shoulder patch that will become permanent. And I have for you a lapel pin and a centennial coin to add to the coin collection.
Great, thank you.
Great, very much. And as he's passing those out, are there any other public comments? Are there any other public comments? Does anybody want to make a public comment?
Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, we'll close the meeting, motion to adjourn. Thank you very much.